We're going to do nomination, chairman, vice chairman tonight.
I guess we have to.
Chair.
Well, we were going to do it like.
I mean, if y'all want to go ahead and do it, I mean, it's only for the next three months. By our rules, we're supposed to do it again in January, I think is what it says. So, we just missed it.
By the rules, we're supposed to do a lot of stuff. So, finally, we got to do that.
Well, I mean, that's what I'm saying. I mean, you can just come back and change.
What's up, how you doing today?
All right, thank you.
I started to tell you we was leased. It was living with when I saw you pulling up.
I saw you walking out.
You do want to do the nomination tonight?
Yeah, let me just do. Yeah, just at the end.
Okay. That'll work. Scott, nomination tonight for us, please.
Yes, sir.
We'd like to take this opportunity like we do to the September 28th, 2017, vote down its own board of justice. We do appreciate y'all being here tonight, since I can, you can hear me now. If you would, please say, and as we have our nomination followed by the pleas of the legits. If you would, do the nomination, please.
If you would, let's file. Father God, we come to you right now and we thank you for your loving kindness, that you have shown each and every one of us, for giving us the opportunity to be able to live in one of the most beautiful corners of the world. We thank you, Father God, that as we look out and we see the natural beauty that's around us, that it's a reflection of the true beauty and grace that you've blessed us all with in our lives. And so, we pray, Father God, that as we meet together tonight, that we would be able to reflect on the beautiful country that we live in, and the wonderful opportunities that you bestowed upon each one of us, to enjoy liberty and life and freedom. We thank you, and we ask that you be with us as we seek to lead and to lead with. It's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Like the living to see the light of the United States of America, and to be brought up before the citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. We do appreciate all the board members here being with us. I thank two, three, I went fishing the last time we had a meeting. We do appreciate y'all being here tonight. I thank, went with y'all fishing, because he wasn't here either, so it's good to have him with us. Karen, appreciate all that you do. Mike, I thought you were replaced by Ms. Ford when I came in. She was sitting there, and I said, "Why don't you look at there?" She's already working back with the county.
She's made by the word, I don't.
We do appreciate the planning staff here. Ms. Sidney Knowles, I believe that she with us tonight. Appreciate you being with us and look forward to a good meeting. Do we have any announcements tonight that need to be made, Mr. Dykes?
Just an update. I'll go ahead and let the board know. As you know, we had some appeals filed last year. We have five outstanding appeals. They're still pending. They've all, the appeals have been assigned to Judge Lewis, who's a new judge. He's only been on the bench right out of here. So, they're still pending. I'm going to get with Sidney tonight. We're going to kind of go over this list and see how we can maybe get some of these moving to a resolution. But, as I said, all of them are, have been briefed, so they're pretty much in the judge's hands at this point, so. And just for the record, you had Sanctuary by the Sea, which was a, an appeal based on this board's decision to grant a blanket variance that related to some setbacks on the...
Covenants?
Covenants, correct. You had the Fred D. Franches, that one, there's two of those, so that's two of the five that are outstanding. And then, we have the one for, where staff appealed the board's decision. That's the Wayne Diaz appeal that's still pending. And the Sanctuary by the Sea appeal, which dealt with a cleaning, clearing permit that was requested that was denied based on language in our land development code, so.
Well, I'd be glad if some of them gets resolved. Maybe. Any others? Announcements?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
We give each and everyone the opportunity to speak before this board, and in doing so, you have to stand and raise your right hand to be sworn that the testimony you give will be the truth to the best of your ability. So, anyone that's planning to speak tonight, please stand so that you'll be sworn in. Mr. Dykes?
Thank you. If you'll raise your right hand, you all swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God.
First item on the agenda tonight is the Winston Lane variance.
Did you want to do the minutes approval, or you going to do that?
We'll do that at the end of the meeting. Melissa, I believe you first up.
Good evening. Melissa Ward with Dunlap and Chipman. Dunlap and Chipman represents the owners, Mr. and Mrs. John Norton and Mr. and Mrs. Rick Shock. And we would like to present to you a variance request, reducing the side setbacks from seven and a half feet to five feet on a property identified as 115 Winston Lane. For the record, we'd like to ensure that our narrative and our application was submitted into the record.
Any objection by staff?
No objection.
Is it in?
It's in your packet. It is in the packet.
You want, which ones are you wanting? You want the narrative? Explain that again.
We presented an application. Included in the application is a narrative that we prepared and submitted as well. We just want to make sure that it's entered into the record as evidence.
Do we need to?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Do we need to assign exhibit?
You can, as applicants, exhibit A or composite. Staff has indicated they have no objection to.
Exhibit A, and they have to take care of the narrative also since the application, correct?
Yes, sir. So, what we have before you is 115 Winston Lane, and I have some slides to give some background information. This property is on the east side of Winston Lane, which Winston Lane butts up right against Rosemary Beach, and is south of 30A, and is a nice, a nice area, nice neighborhood. The, the picture that you see before you is from Google Earth, and it's about a 2007 aerial, that shows, if you can see in the property, and I don't know if I can show you on here, does it show you? No, it doesn't. The, the property owner at that time had put landscaping out in the front yard and was on his way to developing an area of landscape, streetscape design. The, as, the property, the next picture is a 2012 showing the streetscape. The property on the east side of Winston Lane, which has that car driving south, and it's the two houses at the intersection of Winston and Walton Rose. And I'm sorry, I don't have a way to point to it, to show it to you. I had another presentation set up, but I didn't, I had a malfunction getting it to work, so I had to use this. What you're looking at now is, is a 3D Google visual of the property, which gives you a little bit better understanding of, at that intersection on the northeast corner is the 115 Winston Lane. And what you see is landscaping and pavers, which has a seating area and a sidewalk area, and it's very, it's very much used by people who come to visit the area and those who live there. This is a, a view standing at Winston Lane, looking north. Of course, you can't see all the way to 30A, but you, I mean, yeah, 30A, but you can see some of the adjacent properties. This is a, this is actually the view standing on Winston Lane, looking east at the second structure on the house, the ancillary use. And you see the trees in front of that property. That's something that's important to, was important to the previous owner and is important to the current owners as well. This is a picture looking from Winston Lane, facing east, looking at the main structure. Again, this area that you see has pavers, seating area, sidewalk, and trees, all the way, landscaping trees all around it, that the public use as well. This is standing at the intersection, looking east on Walton Rose Lane. The two cars are parked in front of 115 Winston, Winston Lane, and then you see a group of trees there that is of the, inside the front property line there that they want to preserve as well. So, what they're looking to do is you see the, the, when you see the house, you can see what they have, and they're not wishing to change that extensively. Standing back from the intersection, looking at the property, you see a house that looks like it's 20 feet away from the edge of the road. This is actually, that front porch is just, it's either right at or just over five feet from the property line. One of, the one on the far end is almost two and a half, three feet from the property line, existing currently. What's unique about this house in one aspect aesthetically, is that the porch fronts on Winston Lane, which actually is all pavers and sidewalk there in front of their house. The people who stay there and the previous owner have a, have a, an access. They sit on that porch and communicate with people and have a neighborhood feel right there in front of their, in front of their house. When I went to visit the site, there were children playing in that area. There were not residents or visiting that particular piece of property. They were up and down the street, and they were utilizing it. It's a, it's a streetscape design that somebody just liked. They didn't, it wasn't part of the overall street plan. So, what are we looking at? We're looking at a property that currently almost meets setbacks on the front and rear, but doesn't on the side along Winston Lane. And the applicant is requesting that they be able to take down two houses, construct a singular home, meeting their front setback, meeting their rear setback, but asking for a variance for five feet on the sides. Again, the variance, if it, if it is approved, puts their front porch nearly where it is The porch, well, I already talked about. The proposal is for the property owner to maintain the neighborhood feel of that particular property, to maintain the quaint cozy look of those homes and in that intersection. Now, we'll tell you that the applicant has not had renderings prepared. They haven't paid an architect yet. They came in first to look for a variance before they went and paid a lot of money to have plans drawn up that were not going to work on that site if the variance is not granted. So, we don't have renderings, but a little later on, we have a, a visual of what, what they're looking at, some ideas. The potential footprint here shows that the porches are the actual area that would abut the five-foot side setback, that the house itself, and porch is typically around 10 feet deep, so the house itself would be further away, but the porch itself would, would be at the five-foot setback. They are talking about, they would like to do a staggered porch. The one end of the house would have a porch that's at the five feet, the most northern piece. The southern portion of the house would be pushed back, and that way, both porches would have a view to the, to the water. So, the, one of them is actually just a portion of the northern piece of the house. The house will be a singular home. Where they've had two separate homes, they will be joined, it will be one house joined with several varying facades to make it very unique. And this is just a drawing, a potential drawing of a second floor. This is a picture of a, a style of porch that they're looking for. It's very welcoming to the neighborhood, and right there along that paver that's already existing, and very similar to the one that was already there. The, the, the picture on the top is a picture of the existing home, and the picture on the bottom is a, an idea, picture of what they'd like to do. There's a unique aspect to this property that, that happened way before these people ever bought this property. When they came in to, to purchase the property, they were, they understood that they were grandfathered, as they say, for five-foot side setbacks. The lot does predate the 1996 lot of record, but it does not predate the 1975 lot of record date for the administratively approvable five-foot side setback. So, when they found that out, they came to look for some assistance in getting a variance. In doing some research, we found that the Rosemary Beach PUD was approved by the county abandoning 33 feet of a 66-foot right-of-way. And as part of our presentation, I'm going to have Colleen Sacks explain some of the, some, some, some things that should have happened back when they first approved that abandonment. And ideally, what would have happened when they abandoned the 33 feet and shoved all the responsibility to the eastern side of that roadway, was that they shoved all the responsibility for the roadway towards the eastern property owners that abutted that roadway. They didn't accept any of the responsibility on the western side. Normally, they would center the road, and they would share the benefit of abandoning the unnecessary portion of the road. That didn't occur here. It's all shoved over to the east side, pushing their property line back an additional 16 and a half feet. But I'm going to let Colleen speak to that, if that's all right with you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You was talking about the trees and the pavers.
Yes, sir.
That's in this, this picture, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
This is the trees that, that is before the street?
Mm-hmm.
That's an easement?
It's a road, it's a right-of-way. It's a road.
The trees is in the right-of-way?
Some of them are. Some of them are on the property.
Okay.
Within the first...
The yellow line, that yellow line, and that, is that a road?
It's a Google identifier of a road. It's not the, it's not a painted yellow line.
How wide, how wide is the road?
The road is 33 feet wide.
How wide is the pavement?
I'm not aware of how wide the pavement is. I think I can look on a survey.
So, we don't know how much these trees is in the right-of-way? Is this part of the 33 foot that you abandoned? You speaking of was abandoned? Is this part of this abandonment?
The, the abandonment was, the abandonment was on the western side of the 66-foot right-of-way.
Okay, but off this street, Winston Lane?
Yes, sir.
So, the abandonment was on the opposite side of the pavement in this picture?
Yes, sir. On the Rosemary Beach side.
It appears to me that quite a bit of that easement of record, 33 feet, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is in landscaping?
Yes, sir.
Correct?
A portion of that landscaping is within the right-of-way. Yes, sir.
And there's a little fence, do they have a little fence that's going down that shows in this picture?
Do they have a fence in the right-of-way? Is that your question?
No, there's their boundary line has a little fence on it.
Their boundary line does not have a fence on it. There is a picket fence that's part of the landscaping. I'm not sure if it's on the property line or if it's in the right-of-way.
Okay. So, the 33 feet that was abandoned was on the west side of the street that is in this picture. You have quite a bit of landscaping in there that's in the easement, and their property is joined to easement, and right now, there's a porch that would be identical where it's located, or is it going to stick further out into the, the setback?
I believe where, with a five-foot side setback, I believe it'll be just slightly further away from the property line.
So, you say, your testimony is that this, this porch, as it is right now?
Encroaches the side setback.
Encroaches the side setback?
Yes, sir.
And the side setback right now is five feet because it was built prior to now?
The size setback right now is seven and a half feet because the platted lot, or the lot, not platted lot, but the lot has a date of creation of the, of the 1980s. And the 1975 is, it's June of 1975, that is the automatic five-foot setback date. So, this was a trade in 1980s. It doesn't, it doesn't get an automatic five-foot side setback.
Rosemary Beach was not there in 1970, 80, was it?
No.
In the 90s, in the early 90s.
But this lot was of record?
The lot that, Mr., this 115 Winston Lane was a lot of record. But to be clear, the setback is seven and a half feet, so if they tear down the structures, the county requires that they meet that seven and a half foot side setback, which prompted a variance request. The structure itself is not in violation because it's a non-conforming structure. They were built in 1943, or started in 1943. Mr., I don't remember his last name, but his first name was Oliver, changed things over the years. So, but 1943 is when the structures were dated to have started to be built.
This, this house?
Mm-hmm.
In 1943?
That's the date we have on it, yes, sir.
But it's not a lot of record prior to 1970?
It was a larger government lot that was spliced away.
And therefore, it would not, it would not fall under it?
Not under the 1975 rule, no, sir. Because the lot itself was not actually created until the 1980s, after the 1975 rule.
Wow.
Yes, sir.
But you don't know what kind of structure they want to build yet?
We know that they want to build a single-family home, a stick-built structure. We know that it's probably two, maybe three stories, but I believe two sto, I don't, I would, they're here to discuss that with you.
Basically?
I'm sorry. The house itself was put together over the years by the previous owners, primarily, I believe, Oliver. And during that time, his, they, the construction skills to put this thing together was maybe not completely up to Florida standards. And they have, there's a picture in the narrative that shows how they put blocks together and then put a column on it, or how they, it doesn't show everything, and the, Mr. Norton is here to explain some of the problems they found with the house. They've done as much repair on the house that they can to make it livable, but it requires that they take it down and rebuild for it to be truly, you know, because it's dangerous to a certain extent, as it is.
The setback that you're asking would not affect the square footage of the house because it's your, it's your testimony that the, the porches will be built into the setback?
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yes, sir.
So, basically, you're asking for a five-foot setback so that they can have a nice porch?
Well, without a design rendering, I can't attest to anything, and I'm, and I'm, will allow Mr. Norton to come up and talk to you about what they would do, or what they would plan to do. But ideally, we're just talking about the porch encroaching the two and a half feet as opposed to the...
The structure.
The structure itself.
Go ahead.
I've got a quick question.
Yes.
Why would the applicant lay out that structure for a five-foot setback instead of the seven and a half and, and go through all this? What, why wouldn't they just lay it out conforming to these setbacks?
Well, I think part of that has to do with the fact that the lot, the lot is smaller than some of the other ones in the neighborhood, and they don't want to build a, a slender, tall structure that is not in keeping with the, with the neighbors. They're really not trying to do anything huge and, just not that. But they are trying to, they, the house as it sits, they like the way that the lot looks, and they like the way that it feels, and that the five foot, the two and a half feet really offers that the house, the porch, the communal area is, is up against the paver in the neigh, in the design that they're, that they fell in love with when they bought the property. So, you're talking about, a streetscape is a little different than a standard setback, and everybody has a standard setback, and you stay away from your neighbors. This is a corner lot, and there is in existence a plan set out for community time, community talking, coffee drinking, talking about the newspaper. And this, they just want to be able to put it where that porch was because it created the environment that made them want to buy the house in the first place. So, this is not, there's, there is a, there is a reason that the lot is more narrow than what it would have been, but it's because of what happened whenever they abandoned the right-of-way. But, but their purpose, they, they were not aware of that. They were not fully aware of that situation. What they wanted was to, here's where the pavers and the landscaping is. They were renting and using and bought and lived in the house, and the community enjoys that intersection, and that's what they'd like to be able to continue to do.
And when they purchased that home, they knew the setbacks that existed at that time?
When they purchased the home, they believed they had a five-foot side setback.
Okay.
Because that's what they had, man.
Because, because, there are no, the situation is, a lot of times, you have to go back and do a ton of research to determine what law applies to that particular lot. In this case, you ask a builder, or you ask somebody else, and they might say, "Oh, gosh, that's from the 1980s," or "That house was built in 1943." You'll get, you should have a five-foot side setback. The county can give you a five-foot side. They don't go back and do all of that back history to determine whether or not it actually falls in, under that crack for the five and a half, for the five feet, or if it doesn't, and you have to seek other remedy.
Melissa, I saw in the application that they're requesting an approximately 6,000 square foot dwelling on a 50 by 112, which is about the size of a watercolor lot. And I've personally put 6,000 square foot houses on 50 by 110 with the seven and a half foot side setback, so I know it can be done. And I've read a lot about the trees and the, in the park that's in the, the right-of-way being an amenity for the neighborhood. My concern would be that a new 6,000 square foot structure would actually kill the trees as you dug new footings for that sized structure. You'd be cutting all of the roots for the oak trees as you moved the majority of the lot, much, much larger structure to that five-foot setback. And I, I, I feel like that there's a compelling argument for maintaining the five-foot setback that's already part of the existing fabric of the neighborhood, and that the house was originally built in 43. I think that's a more compelling argument than preserving the trees, because I think they are going to be adversely affected. And one of my biggest concerns was what other people in the neighborhood felt about the, the variance request, and I found this sitting on the table. Are these the two immediate property owners that have...
We have letters, there are submitted letters from the two immediate property owners that were in favor of it, and a few others. There's actually, I looked through the list, there's actually one other I don't believe is, is there. And I know, I'm pretty sure they sent a copy to the plan, but they may not have, and I didn't bring it with me, and I apologize for that. But they do, they have a, you know, some support from some of the neighbors, and again, Mr. Norton can address that as well.
Are there people here tonight that are here to oppose it?
Yes, yes. And, and let me just say, and I'm not, I appreciate where you're going, and I appreciate it because it is important. This is the, this is the forum for this discussion. I wasn't all the way down there yet, but I'll jump to that. We did, I did get phone calls from people who didn't write letters, who were not opposed to it, but I did get a phone call from Betty Letcher. I'm not sure if she's here this evening. She's not, but a good deal of people are. And her concerns, she, she said she recognized, she likes the cottages, she likes the look if they're doing the same, but what she's concerned about is that they are not going to have to abide by the same rules as everybody else. Seven and a half feet is seven and a half feet. And that, she was very clear about that, and we understand that that is an objection to the variance request, any variance request. So, I mean, you know, we're aware of that. I know that there are some behind us over here who'd also like to state their objections, and, you know, we welcome the opportunity.
Any other questions for her right now? I think I have a better understanding of what we're doing, so, go ahead.
I was going to say, I was going to allow Ms. Sacks to get up and speak on the abandonment issue.
Sure.
Good evening. I'm Colleen Sacks. I am an attorney with Dunlap and Chipman, and I just wanted to talk briefly about the issue of the abandonment. We had a 66-foot wide width right-of-way, and... wide width right-of-way. And the part that affected this property was in a deed that was from the nineteen fifty-four. And it said, "This patent is subject to a right-of-way not exceeding," in this case, "thirty-three feet on this piece of property." And then there was thirty-three feet on the adjacent property in width for roadway and public utilities purposes. So it was a ru- it was a right-of-way for a roadway. And when-
Was this a government easement back in, one of the government easements back in the thirties?
Exactly. This came out of the patent. Exactly. Yeah, this is from the United States of America. The deed was the patent deed from the U.S. And so when, so what we had was a sixty-six-foot wide right-of-way, because that's how it was designed to have the thirty-three feet on each side. So each side of that sixty-six-foot wide right-of-way was equally burdened by the right-of-way. And so when thirty-three feet of it was abandoned, all of that was placed on the west side of the property so that the Rosemary Beach property got all of the benefit of it. And this property got none of the benefit of that abandonment.
Who got the benefit of it?
Rosemary Beach, the Rosemary Beach property that was developed.
Was Rosemary Beach the developer is the one that petitioned the county commissioners to do the abandonment?
I believe so. I'm not positive, but I believe so. Because what they needed was, they wanted to build houses on that thirty-three-foot easement. And so what is there now is a wall that the house structure is attached to. And, and so the houses and the walls are built right on that thirty-three-foot easement. So instead of having sixty-six feet, we have thirty-three.
Right.
But instead of, instance, when they said they would abandon the thirty-three feet, instead of placing it in the middle so that each side would have sixteen and a half feet, they placed it so that all the burden was on one side of the property. And there, there's a case, Emerald Equities versus Hutton, that is a Court of Appeals, Florida, second district case. And it, and it just cites the statute that says essentially, "The fee in the abandoned roadway reverts to the abutting estates in the same proportion that these estates were reduced in order to create the roadway." So we're dealing with a roadway right-of-way. We have an abandonment of that. And if you go by Florida Statute three thirty-six twelve, it cites that it's going to be in the same proportion that the estates were reduced, each side should have had the benefit of sixteen and a half feet. Because the county permitted all thirty-three feet to be on one side so that Rosemary Beach could build what they wanted to, that's deprived these owners of sixteen and a half feet. It, they should have an additional sixteen and a half feet, but they don't.
Did Rosemary Beach property owners own this property at one time?
Not the property this house is on, no.
So the, the county commissioner took and, and did what they should have done. When somebody won't build an easement, they did an abandonment, abandonment. And it's not like Dee Francesa's where he wants to build, but that's another story.
Absolutely not. No, it's not the same.
But the, the county commissioner did this abandonment.
Right.
Was this property owner notified? Does anybody know that they were not?
Yeah, we don't know if, if they were notified. But whether they were notified or not, what we're just trying to show is that that's, that's how it should work with an abandonment.
I agree with that.
That's what the statute says. So when that happened, it put all of the burden on the properties on, on this road that are, were on the east side of this road. And it made it so that they had less property, which created smaller lots, and has created the issue with the setback here.
I buy that argument.
Yeah, if, if that abandonment would have been done correctly, they would have plenty of room to do what they're wanting to do.
Absolutely, yes.
Well, not only do you have the abandonment, but you have a house structure starting in nineteen forty-three that has a five-foot setback that's already there. So when you throw the abandonment in with it, it, you know, it's beginning to make a little more sense.
Yeah, you've got a, a one-way street there now.
Right.
And all the utilities for the houses in Rosemary are being dealt with on the Rosemary side. So you don't need the other side of a twenty-four-foot wide roadway. You have a twelve-foot wide roadway that goes right to the wall.
Right.
That cuts down where I guess the, the center of that sixty-six feet would have been.
Exactly. It, it does, yes.
But it has a lovely right-of-way area that has some of the best trees and inlet beach, and the little park there. So I wish there was some way to make sure that, that we could preserve all of that. It doesn't seem like granting the variance is protecting those assets.
Well, it, it is exactly what the owners want. They want to keep the trees and keep as much of that as possible. And understanding that a larger structure, and a structure that's built properly, which this one was not, might impact the root system. Also, and what they're, they proposed, Melissa had talked about how you were gonna have the, the porches be at a different level so that both would have a view down to the water. So only a portion, only one of the porches really, I think, is going to be an, an issue. And, and you can talk to, the homeowners can talk to you about that, because they were talking about today how they, they want to have the porches at different.
Is there a way that you could grant a variance for the porches to be to the five-foot setback, but not the heating-cooled area of the house?
Yes, we can deal with all that.
Because one of the sketches that was provided shows the second story of the house encroaching out to the five-foot setback.
Yeah, and they, like I said, they don't have plans because they didn't want to spend tens of thousands of dollars on that.
I get it. I wouldn't either.
Yeah, before they knew what they could do.
It is their testimony that the setback will affect the porch. We can take and set the variance request, that we grant the variance, with the condition that, as it was testified in the testimony, will meet the porch area and not go beyond that.
So the survey of the existing house shows the outside face of the porch sitting approximately five feet from the property line. And I would be in favor-
Well, before we, we get into kind of leaning one way or the other, I would just recommend that we allow them to present, allow staff to present, and then we hear from the public, because this is all we-
I, I agree with you also, but he's trying to understand our process.
No, I understand. I, I understand.
When you start saying, well, I'm leaning towards doing something one way or the other.
Good point, good point.
We just want him to understand our process too.
Do y'all have any other questions from Melissa or from me?
Not yet.
All right.
We'll give you a chance to come back.
Thank you very much.
Melissa, you through?
If you'd like to take the testimony of the applicant or a-
You said Mr. Norton's gonna explain something, is that correct?
What I was saying is that Mr. Norton and his wife are here if you have questions about how they would like to develop the lot. Again, they don't have any renderings, they haven't sat down with the architect yet. They're just looking at ways to develop the property in a way that's similar to what they have.
We think we're good. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Anyone from, you wanna do the county, or do you want to take and do the, let's do the county position, then we will listen to the audience.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The process for this variance has been followed by the applicant. It meets the requirements of the code. However, we don't believe that the abandonment of the western thirty-three portion of the original government patent easement has any impact on this particular lot at all. What was abandoned was what was encumbering the lots to the west, not encumbering the lots to the east. There hasn't been any reduction in the thirty-three feet on the eastern side of that original government patent easement.
There's not likely-
Now, the one effect that the abandonment on the Rosemary Beach side has is that we would not, because of that government action and the government's decision that that thirty-three feet was adequate for that road, the remaining thirty-three feet, it's my decision not to apply the right-of-way protection zone to the existing thirty-three feet, which does not meet local roadway standards in the, in the Land Development Code of a forty-foot right-of-way. But because the BCC decided to reduce that right-of-way, it's my position that we should not apply the right-of-way protection zone to further protect additional right-of-way that are, that does not already exist. We believe it's adequate. We believe the setback measurement should be from the eastern extent of that thirty-three feet, which is also the western property line of the subject.
But isn't their language, when there's an abandonment, that the courts follow, that whenever you abandon an easement, that it goes equally divided between the property owners?
If we were abandoning the entire roadway, half of it was on the Rosemary Beach side, half of it was on the subject property owner's side. In that particular case, yes, sir, that would be the appropriate procedure. But in this particular case, they didn't abandon anything on the eastern side.
But, and I'm not gonna argue it, but-
And the western side was never the property of the subject.
But it still affects the subject's property. And when they, you know, the, once upon a time, there's a sixty-six-foot easement, overnight it disappeared. It still has a, has an effect where that property owner should have been in the conversation anyway, and they might have been.
Except that, that abandonment was not an abandonment on their property. It was abandonment on their neighbor's property.
I'm, I agree. I, I understand. I'm not gonna argue.
So, we don't believe that the abandonment has any effect on this particular request. This is a simple request to reduce the seven-and-a-half-foot side setback to five feet.
I can see where y'all would take that position.
Thank you. That is our position.
I got a question. Did, are you saying that you're asking if they get the abandonment, or I'm sorry, the variance, that the, it would have the effect of not enforcing the right-of-way setback language? Is that correct?
No, I've determined that we are not gonna apply that portion of the code based on the previous actions of the BCC to abandon the western thirty-three feet.
Okay.
So that, that roadway is as big as it needs to be in the eyes of the board of county commissioners. Therefore, there's no reason to apply additional protection for that roadway that would further encumber the subject lot. We decided not, that that was not appropriate.
And is it-
So their setback is measured from their property line, not the greater extent of what the right-of-way protection zone, based on the thirty-three-foot right-of-way today, needing to be forty feet, would require.
And are any of the trees and the other items that were discussed, are, are any of those gonna be considered part of, without applying the additional right-of-way setback? Are those in the right-of-way?
No, sir.
Okay.
There are certain portions of the trees that are in the public right-of-way now. I don't see that those are gonna be affected by this request. There may be some trees that, that exist within the subject property that very well might be affected if they move foundation closer to, because those porches are on piers, based on the photographs, not a, a board foundation that might interrupt root structure of those trees.
And any of those trees that are in the, that would be either partially or completely in the county's right-of-way, are you get, are you gonna have the applicants seek a encroachment agreement with the county for encroaching into the right-of-way?
I-
Dex, that would be something that public works would address.
Okay.
Yeah, it would not be something planning with, with your question this hearing.
Thank you, Matt. Anything else?
No, sir. And we asked the staff report be entered into the record.
Anyone else from the audience like to come up and speak? Come, please come. State your name for the record.
And just so the record's clear, staff asked that the staff report be entered into the record. Are there any objections by the petitioner? Okay.
We're not gonna do that. It's like a staff is in it, right?
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Rich Jaffe. It's J-A-F-F-E. I'm the president of the Historic Inlet Beach Neighborhood Association. And let me say for the record, there is nothing personal in my comments here. This is purely an issue that we face on a regular basis. With me are a number of other residents and board members who are in agreement with our position here. Melissa painted a lovely picture of what this property is like to some degree. The original, well, the last owner of this place, his name's Oliver Cruz. He was an old and dear friend of myself and my family's for many, many years. The idea that the current applicants want to maintain the neighborhood feel of this property is great. We're happy to hear that. Love to see it. Please do. It's a little misleading to paint a picture, though, that the benches and, and the pavers there are some sort of neighborhood park. It has never been that, to my knowledge. It has never been used as that, to my knowledge. It is simply a part of what was Oliver's property. In fact, Oliver lived in the little bitty house there. He built it, and I believe it is entirely illegal. But he lived there for many years. The main house that we are talking about was, I believe, moved onto that property and used as a rental unit for many, many years and made a whole lot of money for Oliver. He had people coming from all over the world to rent this house. That house, the houses sit on a very small, one-lane, one-way road, and that's Winston Lane. We frequently have issues with cars coming the wrong way down Winston, and it's, it's quite a concern. I realize I am preaching to the choir to some degree here, but I know that you realize there is no proper justification for a variance here. A variance is supposed to be based on a specific hardship related to a property, and it is not to be of the owner's own making. The fact that these folks want to build a bigger, better, better house on this property is not a hardship of any way, shape, or form. They knew, or should have known if they did due diligence when they bought this property, that the setbacks exist in our community, in this community. They bought it knowing the Land Development Code and the Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan setback requirements are what they are in our community. We have argued these same issues many times in front of you and many times in front of the county commissioners. And pretty regularly, it is upheld that the standard setbacks are appropriate unless there is indeed some sort of hardship. You want to put a lift in there for somebody who has a wheelchair, not a problem. Go for it. To simply want to build a six-thousand-square-foot house on a little bitty lot is not a hardship. And quite frankly, it's not a little bitty lot. This lot is point one-four-nine acres. And quite frankly, it's over a thousand square feet. You can build a lot on this lot. In fact, the size of this lot, while they're saying that they need a variance to build here, is actually larger than the size on many other lots in Inlet Beach that can be subdivided into eight units per. There were a lot of properties that did exactly that. Some on our side agreed and voted to stay at four units per, but there are quite a few that have been subdivided into eight units. This is bigger than those units. So if you start granting variances because they want to build one, would all those other people who are building on eight-unit properties then be able to come in here and say, "I want to build a bigger house as well"? Because, hey, they have actually more space than we do. That shouldn't be appropriate. The buildable area on this lot is over three thousand square feet. That's plenty big enough. You can build a three-story house, as you heard. They're looking at six thousand square feet on this. There is no justification for giving these folks a variance just because they want to build a bigger house. This argument that it originally had a smaller setback isn't valid because any smaller setbacks established for this property before the existence of the county's Land Development Code were set so that there was some setback requirement that was greater than zero. That's the reason those things were done. The Land Development Code and the Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan supersede all of that. We are now, and have been for many years, basing development in this county and in Inlet Beach on the seven-and-a-half-foot setbacks. You can do that with this property. You can still build without changing it and setting, quite frankly, the kind of precedent that we don't want to see in Inlet Beach, which is giving people variances just because they want to build bigger.
No, 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 not leaving.
Okay.
They can build a house without asking for the setback. They just ask them for the setback for the porch. And you don't think-
Uh, excuse me.
Since the porch is already existing, you don't think, you, you still think that's a bad thing to do?
If you had drawings in front of you that they were ready to build, I might buy that- If you had drawings in front of you that they were ready to build, I might buy that argument. I don't know that I would buy that and simply say, "Okay, fine. You can do everything, but the porch can hang over." And, and quite frankly, a variance is a variance is a variance.
Well, let's, let's, if we, if, let's say that we, you know, had a, 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 a motion that, as I said earlier, they, their testimony is it's gonna be a porch. Our variance can reflect that, that, you know, we would grant this variance for the two porches, as you testified, that none of the building footprint of living area can be within the variance, two and a half feet. We can do that. Would that be a difficult thing for you to let us do? If we, if we can tie it to the porch?
Let me ask you this. If you do that and these guys sell their property, and there's a variance on record already for that property, what happens after that?
For the porch. We, we will put in there for the porch. And they, and we, we can specify that it cannot be living quarters. We have specified it's for a porch, and we have specified that it can never be living quarters, heating and cooling.
None of, none of the main structure would be allowed beyond that setback?
Right. Ever.
What is called is a conditional variance, based on the conditions that would be set forth in the variance. If the property sold, the variance would still exist, but the same conditions would apply, to answer your question. So, if the property sold and the variance had specific conditions, it, it, it would, they would still be in play.
It runs with the land, or understood? It doesn't go away.
It would be the lesser of the evils. As I've said, the concept in Inlet Beach right now is that everybody and their brother wants to come in and tear down the old houses and build a Rosemary Beach house. And it destroys the nature of the community. It is destroying the color of the community. Because we are not Rosemary Beach, we don't wanna be Rosemary Beach. But that's exactly what is happening in our place.
I, uh, don't know if I ought to admit this, but I was serving on this board when there's a particular house came up in Inlet Beach, and I think that, you know, I went along with it, and I regret it to this day.
We got a few of those. We'd be happy to talk about it.
And I would not ever go along with that again. However, I feel like since this is a structure that's been there somewhat for a long period of time, and they are asking for a porch and a living area, you know, I'm tendency to, to work with them.
I, and I understand that.
Now, for somebody to come here, you know, that even, uh, this particular one was built, and they said they didn't notice that much, but anyway, you know, like I said, I, I feel like I made a mistake then. And I'm gonna make sure that I do better in protecting those things.
And we appreciate that. My, my ongoing issue here, and simply because I'm a skeptical kinda guy, is they wanna build a six thousand square foot house. Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
That, that is incorrect.
That's what was said.
We'll just...
Yeah, let's, 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 let's let him do his testimony, then we'll let you come back and...
If these, if these folks wanna build houses that are in keeping with our neighborhood, fine. Six thousand square foot house, if that is correct or incorrect, then we need to clarify it. That's a whole different animal. Quite frankly, even a five thousand square foot house is a different animal.
You stop right there.
Okay.
You the property owner?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just, just state, just stand up and state, state your name for the record.
John Morton.
What's your name?
John Morton. And, no, yeah, six thousand feet, I think what happened was they took the footprint that we were looking for.
We just wanted to know. We don't just...
What are we gonna build?
He's asking, he asks.
Less than four thousand feet. It, it abs, and if it even gets that big, I would be terribly surprised. It will not be, and we're, this is our home. This isn't a house that we're gonna spec and sell or, or do anything. This is where we're gonna live seven months of the year. This is not a monstrosity that we're trying to miss, uh, mess up the neighborhood with.
How many stories does this house gonna be?
We don't know that, and that's some, somewhat dependent on these setbacks because, um, we do have a big family, wanna bring family down here. Right now, we have it at two and a half stories. Two stories with a, a bunk room up above.
Have y'all met before?
Nope.
Is, is there a good possibility that y'all could work together, maybe?
Frankly, I'm disappointed that we haven't. I, I sent emails, I sent, got in the neighborhood app. I want anybody in that opposition, come talk to me. I don't, I, I live here. You guys are my neighbors. I wanna make this easy. I don't, I don't wanna do something that's out of line.
And, and forgive me, but, and, and this is not an issue for you. I am not aware of Mr. Norton, except for the fact that this variance came up. We do have a neighborhood association. I saw a comment from you on Next Door about the fact that you guys live here. Frankly, none of us are aware that you live here, if you do. So, me, that hasn't meant...
Let's, let's, let us go ahead with this.
Certainly.
Since y'all neighbors have met one another, he's clarified your square footage. Is that correct?
The, the house next to me right now, that just sold, is four thousand plus square feet. So, that, that's quite a difference from six thousand square...
I agree with you. So, if people work within that four thousand square feet, then that helps things along a little better, right?
It does. We, our preference would be that people work within the setbacks that exist. Those are the rules. That's what most of us have to live by. And beyond that, it's in your discretion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Norton, anything else you wanna add?
Well, the only other thing I would expand upon was when we bought the house, it truly was just a, a property that we were gonna use, um, for vacation. And we started spending time down there. We loved the place. We decided to make it our primary residence. We're there seven months out of the year. We, we don't live there full-time, but we are there seven months out of the year. We came down last night. We'll go back to Indianapolis in May. I go back and forth, Laura, we'll stay here the whole time. We're not trying to disrupt anything, but it is, um, it is a very tiny lot. And with the setbacks, and especially with the right-of-way, to, to duplicate even that porch scenario, i- i- it's not doable. The thing that we loved about the house, that's, it really, most, the most intangible piece are those porches. When we started sitting out there when we first bought the house, people were walking by. We met everybody, and we loved it. We became part of that house, so much so that we decided we were gonna get something nicer down here. We bought it, we lived in it for a few months and said, "This isn't it. We wanna be on Inlet Beach." We like the neighbors, we like the neighborhood, we like how eclectic it is, and we wanna duplicate. I, I shouldn't say we wanna duplicate. What, what we have there unfortunately isn't quite livable. I could hang there, and my wife is sick of it. But, I mean, to build something that is gonna be better for our family, where our kids can come down, we can spend... We, we were down here for Thanksgiving last year. That, that's our goal. I, i- it's not a, it's not a pure profit rental property. It's not something we're gonna flip. This is, this is our home. This is what we want to have.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else come up?
My name's Danny Hornsby. I live at two oh two Pompano, Inlet Beach.
What's your last name?
Hornsby, H-O-R-N-S-B-Y.
Okay.
I'm against it. Uh, we're starting with a new sheet of paper. I mean, he's gonna tear down what's there. He has no plans. He can adjust. Uh, uh, i- if we start going down, everybody that wanted a variance and let your porch hang over here, let your porch hang over there, I mean, we're gonna look like Laguna Beach, which we don't want. Uh, I mean, we're fighting hard to keep it residential and keep it nice. And we hear this all the time of, "I, I just wanna come down here," and I'm not saying he doesn't, but we hear it, "I just wanna come down here and make this my family home." That's the last we see of him, and it's a rental, and we never see the owners again. And it's just, it's repeated in Inlet Beach over and over again. And it's, the kids used to play ball in the streets. I mean, it's a great family place to live. If he was having to work with what he had, it's a different story. But he's taking it out, and we're starting with a clean sheet of paper. Instead of us adjusting to him, shouldn't he adjust to us? It's the rules. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I, I didn't swear in. I guess I...
That's fine. I can swear in. Come on up.
And I wasn't expecting to speak.
That's fine. Raise your right hand. You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you God.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
My name's Elizabeth Green. I live at two seventeen Walton Rose Lane, which is right off the edge of that map. I've lived there. My husband is an architect. We've lived here full-time since, well, we built the two structures, full-time since basically two thousand and four. The property in question is, and I, it's, right now is an oasis of green. It's some of the green that's left in our neighborhood because, I'm nervous. I don't normally do this. Oliver's lot, we'd always chat with Oliver because he was always out there. Wonderful man, beautiful yard. All the times that I'd walk past that lot, it's not a park. I'm not gonna go sit in somebody's picnic table and stuff. No, that has never been known as a neighborhood park. You'd go up there and sit and talk to Oliver. But since Oliver died, God rest his soul, no. You, you see rental people there all the time, and you, you make your corner on your power walk and bye-bye. If they're only going to do, this is another issue, if they're only going to do a se, a four thousand square foot house, they've got plenty of room to, to do that. They don't need to go from seven and a half feet to, to five. If they're only, if they're keeping the house that small, there's no need for this. They can build plenty on that lot. That's, and, and it's, what I'm, what Mr. Hornsby has said and what I see over and over and over, they come in, say, they say exactly what he just said, "Oh, we're gonna live here. We love it," and we, we never see him. And I've never seen anybody staying in that house that, maybe I'm just not real observant. But Oliver's lemon tree is on that lot, and shoot, a lot of us have partaken of Oliver's lemon tree and never been stopped over the past six months. So, that tells me that nobody's been there.
Or he's a good neighbor.
Uh, Oliver's is, is up there somewhere, so... Anyway, we've been stealing lemon, sorry. My, to end, to try to get a, a valid point out is, like Danny said, it's already written at seven and a half feet. Don't change it. Poor little inlet is fighting to keep some kinda character, and it's being chipped away at and bitten away at, and we're, we're tired of it. That's, thank, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Norton, come back up.
Sure.
Since you don't have a set of plans, is there a possibility that you can, that you can design a set of plans and possibly ask us to postpone this, continue it until you get a set of plans and see how your plans is going to, to look?
Um, you're not talking about a full set of architectural plans, are you? You're talking about a, a proposal, what the footprint might, what might look like, what the elevation might look like?
If you come in here with a set of plans, say, "This is the house I'm gonna build," and, you know, we're gonna trust that you do that, then it would probably, it would probably help us make a better decision, and probably help your neighbors also to, for us, you know, 'cause they're kinda right.
I don't disagree. Absolutely no problem. We'd love to do that. And as far as, I, I, I'm disappointed again, 'cause we've been here for three and a half years, and we have lived there. We've lived there for at least six months for the last three years, and we know so many of our neighbors. So, I'm very disappointed that this, this part's coming out, but whatever.
South Walton is busy.
Yeah. Um, absolutely. To put, to put plans in your hands of what we intend to do, um, no problem. To spend fifty thousand dollars for plans prior to this meeting, that was pretty painful.
Well, I, I won't comment on, on that, but if you could do that, I think it'd help this board, and it would help the neighbors, and I think it, it'd be, it'd be great if you would.
Sure. And is that some, is it conceivable that we could do that and reconvene in thirty days, the next meeting?
What we'll need to do, either you or your agents will need to request that this be postponed, and then we can do as you said, you know.
But we can, we can do it at the next meeting.
But, I mean, it needs to be requested by you or, you know, your, your representatives.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Otherwise, we'll have to make the decision with, with what's presented tonight.
So, you, you, they would still be spending a lot of money for architectural plans with the risk of us telling them no, right?
No. We just want him to come up. He can sit down and take a scale and just scale out a house and say, "This is the house that we, you know, we picked this house out. This is, this is the house I wanna build." You know, just something for us tonight.
See, I'm, I'm confused why you, how you can ask for a variance when you don't know what you're gonna build. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense.
In order to work with the board and with the community, we would like to request a, a continuance of this particular item from your agenda for thirty...
Thirty days, sixty days, whatever.
Thirty days specifically to bring back a rendering of a proposed footprint and elevations and facade, so they can see what the building will look like.
Do we have to vote on that?
Yes. Light, lighters.
Well, don't figure out the date. What's the date of the next meeting?
We always do our meetings the fourth Thursday of each month.
So, November, we do the third Wednesday, third Wednesday.
Now, this is the Oc, this...
Uh, the October twenty-sixth.
October twenty-sixth.
But if you push it to sixty days, and you're looking at, because of the Thanksgiving holiday, we, we always bump it up.
Right. No, we don't wanna do that. Uh, October twenty-sixth is the appropriate date.
And, and obviously, if, if you need more time, or if you find out you don't need the variance based on the plans, then, then we would just need to know that.
Then we submit in writing withdrawal.
We need a motion to continue this to the twenty-sixth of October.
I'm sorry, Matt. Do you have something you wanna add?
In order for us to prepare the packages for your consideration, one week in advance, we're gonna need it at least one week in adva, one week plus a day before the meeting.
Is that doable by the petitioners?
Two and a half, three weeks.
Okay. And, and again, if it, if...
That gives them to...
Right. If something occurs, you need to get with staff, and then we can look to bump it to the next. But at this point, the request is to continue it till...
As long as it doesn't need to be architectural. It'll be the scale. It'll be what aren't...
Well, you can submit whatever you want. I mean, it could be a hand-drawn. It can be something more, you know, professional. Whatever you wanna go through, that's, that's on you. We're not, you know, but I think you've heard as to what both the public as well as the board would like to see. So, the request at this point is to continue this matter till the October twenty-sixth.
Yes, sir.
And we're certainly fine with the continuation, so just wanted to caution the applicant that we need that probably a week and a half before that date in order to get it into the package to provide you, um...
So, that gives you three, less than three weeks. Is that suitable?
Yeah. Yeah, I've been drawing for two years, trying to figure it out.
I make a motion to continue to the October twenty-sixth meeting.
We got a motion, a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor of I?
I. Any names?
Pose. All, all yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. We appreciate it.
You bet.
Thank you.
And just for those who are here, you, you heard, uh, I don't know, does another notice go out, Matt? I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so. So, so anybody who's here, there will not be another notice that goes out, so just be...
There will not be another notice?
Not another notice that will go out, so you need to be here on the twenty-sixth or submit something in writing to the, if you want staff or anything like that.
We can contact you via email, and other, other people can contact you with other ideas and...
Well, what...
Hit me my card, and we can communicate instead of meeting, if you like, the community meeting, if that helps you. Would it be helpful?
What if they don't get the information and they're not on the agenda? Why, why don't y'all give notice in the...
It's continued to a date certain, date, time, and place certain. There's no requirement for notice under our land development code and state law.
For some reason, he doesn't wanna do October, then they just gonna show up to, or call? They need a call?
They will need to request a continuance from the date that we're, your continuing tonight.
No, he's talking about the public. The public, the agendas are, are, are posted. You can call up to the county and get those. Those are all public records. So, if, as the date comes closer and you just wanna confirm it, contact staff, and you can get a copy of the agenda.
Sure. We're gonna take a five-minute break.
You know, it's gonna be too much to ask for, for them to settle this amongst themselves.
You know, that was, that was getting my attention on that, that right-of-way, but I don't understand why Matt is saying that didn't make a difference.
It wouldn't make a difference to me if I owned that lot. And I knew that across the road that they just inherited a thirty-three foot windfall.
Yeah.
Those folks bought the property in two thousand and fourteen, after Rosemary Beach is built out.
Yeah, but road's a road, and impact's an impact, and...
I don't know why they don't just take the NASA bill and ease them, I mean, what the heck?
You're a troublemaker.
Are we gonna need Matt?
No.
Okay.
We're, we're good.
No, they said we're good. We can go with him. That's what they said.
Yes, sir.
That's them. Look, it's their, their call.
They're gonna be adjourned this meeting? Next time Matt, I'm on the agenda. It's got the, uh, McConnell variance. Are you, only people left. You must be Mr. and Ms.... Are you, the only people left, you must be Mr. and Ms. McConnell.
Uh, no, I'm not. Good evening, um, my name is Ralph Gage with Ralph Gage Contracting, I'm here on behalf of Rick McConnell. This is owner of a lot, six block C of the Village of Blue Mountain Beach on Abbey Lane, down in Blue Mountain. We're requesting a variance to the diagonal setback from fifteen feet to seven and a half feet. When Mr. McConnell bought the lot, we went to the county to check on setbacks, and we were told that the diagonal setback was considered a side setback, which was seven and a half feet. So, with that knowledge, we went ahead and had the design of the house done, complete set of plans for the design review board. Of course, they came back and said that they had just changed that, they went back to the old plat for the villages of Blue Mountain Beach in the time that we had our house plans drawn. So, um, they were saying that the diagonal setback was now fifteen feet. We talked with them, uh, they're in favor of giving us the variance. There's been many houses in that neighborhood built with the seven and a half foot setback. So, this is something that happened as we were designing our house for McConnell's. So, you know, for him to have to redraw the plans, it would be a hardship on him, costly, time-consuming. And, um, it's not really out of the development that has been going on in there. And, uh, the, the plat that the county was using, um, we went by their recommendations and their setbacks. So, uh, we feel that, um, you know, it, it wouldn't be outside of what has already been built in that community.
Now, the drawing I'm looking at is AS one, drawing number AS one. It's this one with the structure on it, the building.
Okay, yes.
You have the road, it's seventy feet, that's number two, that's your front setback, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then, you have the fifteen-foot setback back there where the thirty-foot is, right?
Yes.
And, now, somebody told you that, what?
Uh, the county says, uh, the front setback is the front road that your driveway is on, that's your twenty-foot setback.
That's twenty foot.
The, the furthest line from that that runs parallel is your rear setback line, which is your fifteen feet. All other sidelines are considered seven and a half foot setback in the eyes of the county.
Okay.
And, and that's the plat that they were going with, that's the plat that they had on file when I went for guidance as to how we should design the house.
And that's what you did?
That's what we did, yes.
Okay.
So, we took it to the design review board at the villages of Blue Mountain. I guess they had taken over the association from the developer, um, found out that there was an old plat. They went to the county and said, we wanna use the old plat, which says we have to have the, the larger setbacks, um, on the diagonals, 'cause they wanted more setback, more greenery, I guess. Of course, uh, you know, we had already gone through the whole design.
You went to the county, and the county told you to do this, and, and you did it.
Yes, and the association agrees that it would be a hardship, and, and they're quite fine with us building it the way that we have it designed, yes.
Well, just, just hang on a minute.
Okay.
Please, help us understand it.
Actually, the, um, the last page of your package has the wrong, has the wrong lot highlighted, the very last page of plat. Then the handout that I gave you has the correct plat and lot highlighted.
It's not lot one, it's lot eight, right?
Correct. It's lot six.
Lot six.
Lot six, block C. And, um, that's what you have in front of you, is the, the plat, the page plat. What, um, he was referring to as an older plat was not actually a plat. It was the, um, development order plans that were approved by the BCC that we dug, that were dug out of the, um, the file for the project. And that is the second sheet that you, um, that you see, and that's where it shows the setbacks that were, um, approved in the development plan. And by scaling it out, that's where, that's where it was determined that that second rear setback, we'll call it, is, um, was fifteen foot. So, that was according to the approved plans per-
Is this recorded?
Uh, this, this was-
This is not a recorded plat?
No, it is not.
Mr. Chairman, if I could assist, that is the approved site plan from the development order that the BCC approved. And you will note, in each lot, there is a building envelope. It's not dimensioned, but if you scale that, they reference standard county setbacks. And that's what we use to determine what the setbacks on the plat that does not have setbacks dimension, uh, should be. Based on the intent of the developer as approved by the Board of County Commissioners.
So, basically, the, he was told by the county, the setbacks, when he came in with his plan, we, it was looked at by the plan reviewers or whomever that, that, um, since the, there weren't any setbacks on the plat, that we would use the standard county setbacks. It was not until later, when the file was actually pulled with the approved plans, that we discovered that the setback was, uh, actually should, is on both, it's like two rear setbacks.
But that's highly unusual by county standards to have two rear setbacks, correct?
Unless you've got some irregularly shaped lots. Uh, and that's why we went back to the original intent of the developer as approved by the county commission to determine how to apply our standard county setbacks. And when you dimensioned that building envelope, it matches up to seven and a half, fifteen, and twenty. However, in this particular case, uh, this particular applicant may have gotten some misinformation from staff before we clarified what we believe the setbacks to be on every lot in that particular development. We have no objection, um, uh, to this particular variance, but that is where, that's how we're applying setbacks on this development, going forward, based on the original building envelopes that were shown by the developer as the intent for that particular lot and the style of construction the developer intended.
And I read that the HOA doesn't have any objections to this either?
And the HOA does not have objections to this based on the circumstances of this gentleman getting information that was not consistent with what we now believe to be the correct application of setbacks.
Too bad this is not recorded with the plat.
It's not recorded with the plat, but it is an approved BCC, uh, document that's part of the final order. The final order is approved, and everything submitted as part of that, um, is part of that final order, whether it's recorded or not.
Well, that's what we're here for. Glad to be here. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Easy to work with. Vivian?
Yep, uh, staff does not have any objections to the inconsistency of the information the applicant was provided.
Charlie, you have any questions? Bill?
No.
Anybody? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to say?
I wanna make sure, staff wants to enter into the record the report and-
Yes, staff wishes.
Motion to close the pod discussion?
Motion to close.
Wait, wait.
Or, if we're gonna grant this variance, would it be prudent to put it on the, uh, on the side diagonal part, as opposed to not?
That's what he's asking for, right there.
That's the request, yeah.
Okay, but I thought it was just a fifteen-foot rear-
That's why we're gonna make it, set it to this drawing.
Okay.
AS question.
All right.
You good with that?
I'm good with that.
Motion to close it.
Motion to close.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Ahs? Motion?
I make a motion to approve the variance request.
As per, you wanna take and specify as per drawing AS dash one?
Uh, yes.
So, it's clear that it's on that one part of the set, the back, the, the back of that?
The angled-
We, we need to make this part of the record, part of the variance.
You wanna detach to your-
Yes, yeah.
Right, because the existing plans are the hardship, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Big time.
Right, so if you were to start with another plan, then you could design to the correct setbacks.
Yeah.
So, you wanna make the approval contingent-
And Jeff, second.
And you second it?
Yes, sir.
Discussion, Charlie?
Um, is, if they're gonna build it just like they've done it, I think he's, went ahead and made his plans with that intent to do it right-of-way. And, uh, he would have to, it'd take him time and money to do the whole thing all over again, to get it corrected. Um, if the homeowners association's good with it, I'm good with it, I think it's-
These architects just robsy. Man, there, there would be something we could do about that. Can we do anything, you know, try to get it a little cheaper for the guy?
And what I'll say is, just so we're clear, I mean, monetary is, is not the only reason for the hardship. I think the hardship, as they presented, is that they were given some misinformation as well.
I was just joking. Bill, do you have anything to say?
I don't, sir. Anybody?
I'm good.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second. Charlie, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
We got your variance request. We appreciate you coming. Good luck. We always learn every time we have these meetings. We have the minutes, we need to go back and to approve the minutes, we have two, three sets of minutes here. April twenty-seventh, meeting, motion to approve it.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Ahs? Everyone voted yes. On the minutes of Thursday, July the twenty-seventh, motion to approve the minutes.
I move approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Ahs? We got the minutes approved. We are going to do a little bit of housekeeping, just, uh, since we did it in January. We are going to open up the floor for nomination of chairperson to be elected and vice chair. Nomination?
Nominate, uh, Joe Johnson as chairperson.
I second that nomination.
Any other nomination?
Anybody else want that job?
I haven't been here long enough.
Me either, and I've been here longer than you.
I'm moving to close the nominations.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Ahs? All agree that I remain chairperson, aye?
Aye.
Ahs? Open up nomination for vice chair.
I nominate, uh, Bill Fletcher.
Man.
Second.
Any other, any other nominate?
Close, we know. I made it, John Dixon. I'm, I'm moving, I'm moving to close nominations before, before Bill runs away.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. I just saw-
All agree that Bill Fletcher be vice chair, say aye?
Aye.
Ahs?
Nay.
Good deal.
Just saw railroad being built.
Anything else? Anything else? We covered? We're good. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Ahs? We had a good meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vivian?
Thank you, guys.
You had a good job. Matthew, a lot's calmer than what it used to be. I, I know slightly. I'm not on city council anymore.
Some of my stress, I did so sure.
Your, your opinion on the motions to approve much?
You gonna do it right?
Now, Karen, where you on the votes? Back here?
Yes, sir.
Back there.
I'll take it. You go on a little table.
You all right?